If we can start the meeting, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on command, without doubt, in the mission of the delivery of justice and truth. The reason I'm up here this evening and not our supervisor is that she's sick. She's sorry that this came up. I spoke to her about an hour ago and she is -- sounds quite sick and hopefully she will see a doctor soon and be back. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the prior minutes. And do I have a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Let me make a couple of announcements. We are going to have a week from today at 1:00 here, a presentation on the green energy and in particular the Leeds ratings system. The town has a statute on the books which we passed moratoriums for on green energy and we want to find out more about it so we can do something before our moratorium runs out. The public is invited. We're going to have a couple of experts on the Leeds system and that's 1:00 next Monday here. Does anybody else have any announcements?
Yeah, I -- there are something like six different IT, information technology initiatives going on in the town right now, all the way from new hardware for employees in the town hall and hardware that is shared with the village, to a new website, to software for the recreation department, software for the building permit inspection department, assessors, and email and so on. So if anyone's interested in participating with that, we've got lots of opportunities to help. Please leave me a message with the town clerk or you can email me. The email address is on the website.
Let me again make a plea for those people who are interested in serving on a committee. We do have some openings on committees. You can get a application from our town clerk and put your name in. If you have a specific committee you're interested, fine. If you just want to be on a committee, we can use help on a number of committees. The first item on the agenda, and I see John Lyons here, is continuation of the public hearing on the local law to amend the town zoning district with respect to a infill district at the beginning of Ackertick Hill Road. And this is a petition by John McGuire. The public hearing is continuing. If anybody is here to speak about that, please step forward. If not, and John Lyons is here?
Right here.
Oh, okay. John, if you could help us through this resolution. But first, what, I should entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Is there a second to closing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. And John, there's a proposed resolution here and maybe we should consider that now.
I can take you through the package that John provided for you today.
Okay. And the board members, I believe it's number six in your book.
Just to refresh your recollection, this is a petition for the establishment of a new neighborhood infill overlay district. We've been through pretty much all the process now up to this point. You just finished closing your public hearing. So there's a document package that's been provided to you that will allow you, if you so desire, to take a vote on this proposed amendment this evening. There are some preliminary pieces of procedure which need to be completed as part of that process. One of the things that you'll find that you have is a statement of LWRP consistency. There's a piece of this district that is located in the town's coastal zone and as a result, it requires a determination by the approving agency that the application is consistent with our coastal policies. What we did in this particular case, we did not have a -- we didn't receive any response from the conservation advisory board for the referral on this matter. But what the board did do is it sent this out to Art Road, which is the board's planning consultant. And on the behalf of the town board, Art prepared a coastal assessment form. And then based on that coastal assessment form and the information which we have received as part of the process, I have put together for you a proposed statement of LWRP consistency. The coastal assessment form is attached to that as an exhibit. There are 44 policies in our local waterfront utilization plan that proposed actions in the coastal zone need to be matched up against. We did that frankly because of the nature of what's being proposed here, very few of the policies are even really applicable to this particular action. And there are not really any impacts from this action that are going to have any effect at all of the coastal zone. As a result, we're recommending that you find that this proposed action is consistent with the LWRP policies and the statement of LWRP consistency lays that out for you. The second preliminary item that needs to be completed as part of the process is for you to complete your seeker review. Again, in connection with this, the applicant was required to file an environmental assessment form. Your planning consultant, Art Road, completed part two of the EAF. It's been determined that there are no adverse impacts to the environment as a result of this application. And so because of that, we are recommending to you that you issue a negative declaration as your determination of significance in seeker. Basically, you're just saying that you've taken a hard look at the potential adverse impacts of this proposal and that there are no significant adverse impacts as a result. That's also in your package. Then there is a proposed amendment, which is also in your package pursuant to the instructions of the board. Slight modification has been made to the proposed amendment, which differs slightly from what was proposed by Mr. McGuire as a result of the comments which were received by the town board at the public hearing and in a desire to continue to preserve the village gateway and to avoid traffic problems that may crop up if subdivisions along Route 9 were to be allowed and driveways, there would be an attempt to connect driveways there. The town board decided that it was best not to include the 5.27 acre parcel that was originally proposed to be in this district. It's located right on Route -- excuse me, right on Route 9. So the amendment has been modified to remove that parcel from the district. All the other paperwork has been conformed to that. It's not really a significant change to the amendment, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that it's reflected in the proposal. So the amendment itself is very short because we're really just changing the amendment. The adoption resolution is the document that ties all of this together. It sets forth the procedural history of this. And in that resolution, you will be adopting your statement of LWRP consistency. Then you will be issuing your negative declaration as your secret determination. Then you will be adopting the amendment and then you'll be issuing some directions to John as far as the logistics of completing the amendment. We'll be getting a map from Dutchess County Planning, which will be attached to the final version of the resolution, which John will then file with the Secretary of State.
Do any of the board members have any questions for John? The one question I have, John, is this map, that's the last item, is this the actual map because that, at least what's here, looks like the boundary cuts in half that parcel that we were going to exclude? This one. This is the parcel that's out. I thought it's going to be the whole thing. This is the only parcel. What? Isn't that your understanding of that one?
Yeah, that's what we said to exclude, and it is.
Right. It's the whole parcel, not just this part of it because otherwise you're drawing a line through -- you're splitting that one parcel. Was that your understanding, Michael?
Yes. Because is it possible that the line you're looking at, I can see the map.
Can you take a look at the map?
Yeah.
This is LWRP on Zone 1.
Here's the LWRP. Here's the little piece of parcel.
It's with the parcel.
I think this is actually the line that defines the new district is this dark line.
What you're saying is that this is part of this parcel right here. It's this little dog right into.
I'm not sure what.
I think that's one parcel. Mr. Schuster, maybe you can.
Yeah, Ian prepared that map, so I'm going to ask him to come up.
The part of the line as it's drawn continues the rear property lines of those properties on King Street.
They're saying that this is.
This is part of that, the last lot there is part of that larger parcel which is now being excluded from the district, which would be, doesn't make it, doesn't make it a separate lot. It makes the zoning district line consistent with what's on either side.
Yeah. But would that allow the owner of that parcel to provide it at that line?
No.
That's really a question.
Well, that's fine, but John, I think you have to weigh in on that. I thought that, at least I was advised by you guys, that we should exclude the whole parcel and not draw a line through the, through a parcel.
Well, I don't know. We talked about bisecting a parcel with the line. I don't think that it would be consequential in this particular case to have the line just cross that little neck of the parcel. If you, if you want us to redraw the map, we can do that.
Right. Can we pass this subject to the redrawing of the map?
We have to make some changes to the resolution because there's a, it's not a legal description, but there's a verbal description of the, of the boundaries of the district in the resolution. So that would have to be rewritten.
Do you think if you and Mr. Schuster went off, you could do that so we don't hold it up?
We can definitely.
Anymore?
Yeah.
Maybe you two could get together and then come back and then we can do it. Does anybody else have any comments? Yeah, if you can do it so we don't hold this up for another session. The next thing is the continuation of the public hearing on the village fire department.
Joe, can I just revisit that for a quick second?
Yeah.
I think if you're going to.
Do you want to?
Yeah, okay. Hi, Gina Box, formerly of the town board, thankfully, but if you want, no, I'm just kidding. Mr. Guys, I actually was going to sit there tonight, but if you, if you're going to change it substantially or even a little bit, maybe the public hearing should just be retained over until.
We've had two public hearings. This, let me just finish. This, I can say that to you now. This, this was discussed, this amendment, several times. We did have public participation.
I don't think you're going to have any problems with it at all, but I'm just, that's just my two cents from the back of my mouth. I'll go back to my tea now.
Going to the next item on the agenda, which is the continuation of the public hearing on the village fire department contract. There's nothing new on that. I think we should continue the hearing. We're waiting to get some more information from the village. So could I have a motion to continue that hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you give anybody that was here?
Pardon me?
Does anybody here want to say anything?
Does anybody want to say anything on the village fire contract? Okay. Pardon me?
Till the next town board.
Yes, till the next town board meeting. The next item on the agenda is presentation by the open space and affordable housing committee. And let me just set the table a little bit for that so to refresh board's recollection and people who are here tonight. Our comprehensive plan adopted in 2009 calls for diversity of housing. And it says that there's a positive benefit of ensuring diversity of housing, that many residents have expressed concern that they would be forced to leave when they retire, that their children would not be able to afford to remain in the community, quoting from the comprehensive plan. Clearly, there's a need for a balanced housing stock that meets the community's diversity housing requirements. The zoning law, which was adopted at the same time as the comprehensive plan at the end of 2009, carries out the thought processes that went into the comp plan. Chapter 63, which deals with affordable housing and also called workforce housing, is not effective. It provides right in the statute, it's not effective until the town board adopts a local law for the administration of the affordable housing program. And this chapter in the zoning law has a rough plan, but leaves it to the open space and affordable housing committee to fill in the details and recommend to the town board a workable plan, which if accepted, will be passed into law. Under the plan in chapter 63, which is stated is not effective, in certain districts, it calls for mandatory construction of 10% of the units. In all the other districts, which are mostly, most of the town, it calls for construction on-site or elsewhere as one alternative. Another alternative is donations of land, which the town is willing to accept. And the third alternative is payment of fees, which fees are payable beginning with one house and upwards. It also contains a density bonus for construction or payment beyond 10%, but it's largely undefined how the density bonus would work. The committee has been working maybe a year and a half on a working draft to implement it. The committee has come before the old board several times to present its plan. We have now two new members of that board. In the past, certain board members have expressed differing views on what should be in a, in such a law. The committee is here to try to get a consensus of the board so it can go forward with what it should be drafting and presenting. And the question that is posed is what does the board want to see in a draft law with, and I guess the two issues are density bonus and fees in lieu of construction. We do have here Anne Saylor, who is with Dutchess County Planning, and she is a guru on affordable housing and workforce housing in Dutchess County. So let me turn it over to Jonathan Mensch and Chris Liston, who are the co-chairs of the committee. And I must say, as late as on to the committee, the committee is a very hardworking committee. We do have various members of the committee here tonight and I'm sure they will free to make comments as well as people in the audience. Jonathan?
Sure. I'm Jonathan Mensch. This is Chris Liston, with the co-chairs of the committee. And I think just to start, we'd like to start by saying what we're defining as workforce or affordable housing. And workforce housing, as we're defining it, is housing that's available for people who live and work in town. And these are people who meet certain income requirements, but these are income requirements that are based around median incomes for this area. We're talking about income levels that are between 80 and maybe 110% of the area median, depending on how we ultimately define it. But the idea is that these are people like school teachers, these are town employees, these are people that are working in a local hospital. And we're trying to construct a program that's going to allow people that work locally, also to live locally, and to create opportunities in which, in which some of these housing units are going to be entered in the program, which then available for people, you know, not just in the coming years, but hopefully in the coming generations. So we're trying to create the beginnings of something that is going to be in place for a long time. And in this case, if housing prices go up, if fees change over time, there's going to be an opportunity always, we hope, for people that are working, also live locally. So that's an important first idea. And this is, this is a different thing than some, you know, some other government programs that are geared towards, you know, much lower income levels. We're really gearing this program to, towards people that are, that are working in the community. And as Joe had pointed out, well, we've been through this process for a long time. I mean, I guess a year and a half on actually drafting legislation, and maybe for longer than that. But what has happened is that we started our process by taking a look at a lot of different statutes that exist in a lot of different municipalities, both in Dutchess County and then across the country. And what we found is that the dynamics that exist here are a little bit different than exist in a lot of other places in the context of a lot of other places that have affordable or workforce housing legislation have it set up in the context of much higher density development. So these are, these are big housing developments. These are big apartment, complex developments. And there's typically a program in which some contribution is made towards workforce housing in exchange for density bonus provisions, but it's all contemplated in the context of a much larger scale situation than we typically see here in our deck. What we've been struggling with is trying to balance the type of development that happens in this area in terms of both scale and also the kind of open space preservation initiatives that were put in place as part of the comprehensive plan. And that includes a lot of areas that really are very low density zoning. And there's some, you know, obvious questions that that brings up in the context of workforce housing and how it can actually be created in areas, particularly areas of very low density, meaning that a lot of land needs to be allocated for a housing unit. And that creates some difficulties financially in terms of that amount of land being allocated for a particular unit. So we've really tried to balance those things. And as Joe pointed out, the, we've come up with really two ideas. And the first idea is, is a density bonus provision, which would be applied for larger developments. And we focused on larger development, and that would be done in exchange for either building on-site or a contribution to a workforce housing fund. And that, that would be based around developments or a piece of land that could support 10 or more housing units. And we really started focusing on larger pieces of property because those pieces of property can get master planned as part of the town's mandated for step conservation subdivision process. And that's a really important concept because it means that if one of these large pieces of land is developed according to the way the town is set up to be developed, that means open space is preserved in the area in 10 and 20 acre districts. That's 80% of the land is mandated to be kept as open space. On the five acres down, that's 60%. That's habitat protection. That's environmental protections. The idea is that in that context, the housing that is created is properly sited within that property in a way that can allow for a little bit of a density, we feel, a little bit of additional density. And we're asking for 15, up to 15% in exchange for either building on-site or contribution towards the workforce housing fund. And that's the first part of it.
15% would equate to how many additional units in that?
If everything was built out across the town, which is not a very likely scenario, but if it were to be built out, that would be 132 units. And we'd started the process by looking at what would happen if there was a 30% density bonus. The numbers came back substantially higher, it was about 300 units. And we felt that in the context of the overall projected count build out was too much, so we scaled it back to half of that. And that's, that's, you know, so 15% was really arrived at in the context. And that's, that's, you know, so fifteen percent was really arrived at in the context of taking a look at what it would equate to work to actually take place townwide.
Well, let's just focus on the density bonus, and let me ask if anybody in the public wants to talk or have questions, and then let me go around to ask for comments from the board. Is that an acceptable way of doing it, or do you want to discuss it first and then hear from the public? Let's hear from public, does anybody have any comments on density bonus and how it'll work?
What kind of guarantees are there?
I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone and identify yourself?
I'm Kelly Sherratt. What kind of guarantees are there that the money that they pay into affordable housing is going to go toward affordable housing? What kind of orders are set in place so that that actually happens?
Yeah, what we've got is, is, we're creating a structure in which we would actually create a dedicated workforce housing fund, so all the money that would be contributed would be contributed directly to that fund. That we would then, and we really started the process of, of looking at, at ways that we could use that money productively. And there's a bunch of interesting opportunities. One of them is, is to partner with a nonprofit, which we've already done in the context of the Gardens Project, Hudson River Housing, a partner for that project. Hudson River Housing also oversees about eight hundred rental properties, and in that, in that, in that scenario, Hudson River Housing would probably own it in conjunction with the town's contribution to a particular rental unit, which would then be kept at an affordable price in perpetuity. So all of that money would be earmarked to a program that was, that was geared towards either buying units that would be part of a workforce housing program. There's other possibilities soon, Anne can speak to some of this also. But another possibility that we talked to Hudson River Housing about just a couple weeks ago, was possibly a program in which we would provide assistance for people that met the category that we're looking for in terms of income requirements, in terms of town residency, in terms of, you know, being local workers, which may actually help in making a down payment to a house. So if somebody fits the eligibility requirements, they would actually get some amount of assistance and buy a house locally. So that's another possibility. But in all cases, the money that was raised would be put into a fund that would be earmarked for these programs.
And run by?
Uh, it would be probably overseen by the committee, but we'd be doing that in conjunction with input from Anne at the county level, and in conjunction with, with a nonprofit partner.
And it would be subject to town board, the committee?
But wouldn't that leave the town as being landlord?
Not in the context of Hudson River Housing actually owning the property. We originally had, 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 had looked at that as a possibility, and have been advised, and Anne can probably speak to that, she was one of the ones that advised us against it, so.
Yes, she's the governor.
Anne Saylor, I don't know, I think I have a guru right here, these guys are pretty good. What I did want to say is that your local law will define how the money can be used. Generally, it says, most of it needs to be used for, to create affordable housing, usually allows a small percentage for administration, because they do need to be administered. It will be clearly restricted. I generally don't recommend that municipalities get in the business of housing. I believe that we should all do what we're good at, and there's, people specialize for a reason. And then what the town should do is partner with, you can partner with a non-for-profit, you can partner with a for-profit, and then you have a, not only, you have a restriction against the property. So if the town were to give somebody like Hudson River Housing money to build a building, whether it's rental or owner, there would be a restriction against that, that the town would be in a place, in place that, when it would need to, to enforce. So there would be some obligation on that, and that, that would have to be monitored. But, you know, and, and the real thing is to work with a good partner, somebody that you know is going to be around, somebody you know that you trust, somebody who's really part of the community. And then you really don't have to worry about those kind of things. So, and I just did want to say one thing, I think your committee has been extraordinarily thoughtful. My experience has been that what communities often do is they just look at the town next to them and adopt the ordinance from them, and then when they go to implement, they find, oh, that doesn't work in our unique circumstances. And as Jonathan said, you do have some unique circumstances, and I think they've been really thoughtful in trying to balance those unique circumstances and the needs and demands of all the different parties involved in redevelopment and in the community. So they've done a wonderful job.
I think the committee is up to about forty-two different versions and drafts.
Yeah, it's not, it's not easy to balance all this, and what I always tell people about this is, is this is not a two plus two question. The answer is not four, you know? It's not that easy. And so you, you make compromises, and I think they've done, they've really battled through, they have a lot of different philosophies of people on the board, and that's a good thing. You didn't have all affordable housing believers or all the market can do it believers, you had both of that, and those philosophies have gone back and forth, and I think come to a good compromise.
Anybody else want to, Michael?
I actually have a statement to read if I could.
Sure. And you'll give a copy to Jonathan?
Basically, I'm coming at this from a planning standpoint, given my role in the town here. The town board will be considering amending the affordable housing section of our zoning law to offer density bonuses to developers who aren't paying money through the affordable housing fund. For a price, a developer can purchase the right to build more housing units than our current zoning law allows. That additional available density apparently created when the acre requirements in each zoning district are raised. I have never favored this approach to providing resources to accomplish community goals. It undercuts the rationale behind the rezoning of our residential districts that is expressed in our community's comprehensive plan. In validating the justification for our zoning laws, areas, area and bulk regulations, the acreage per lot deemed necessary to retain the goal, eminently in our comprehensive plan, it perverts review processes for special use permits, site plan approvals and subdivisions by exchanging standards based upon sound land use guidelines for standards that are observed and to be believed to purchase additional density. When our three acre district went to five acres and five went to ten and twenty acres, the rationale to justify those limitations on density was there was the preferred means to retain the goals of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in December of two thousand nine. The zoning law adopted at that same time was designed to work with those district densities, and in so doing, attain those goals by limiting development in each of the zoning districts to a level that would avoid the sprawl and degradation of natural resources often associated with densely developed communities. Reminder, wanting to avoid the mistakes that the communities have made in allowing growth to overwhelm the community's environmental assets. The rules and regulations contained in our zoning law were designed to work with the new zoning districts, rules and regulations premised upon defined densities for each zoning district. They were not designed to function within a context of random densities based upon a fee schedule, which is a characteristic of a system that offers density bonus, density bonuses in exchange for a set fee. For example, if an applicant has a parcel in a five acre district, net density rather than gross density is used to determine how many dwellings can be placed on that property. The acreage associated with water bodies, wetlands and steep slopes is deducted from the buildable acreage of that parcel. The process of determining net density and the justification for doing so in a five acre district is premised upon five buildable acres being available for dwelling in. If a density bonus of ten, fifteen or twenty percent is available for that property, the only requirement to attain that bonus being a payment of a set fee, the rationale for that established five acre district is set aside. The area and bulk regulations that pertain to each zoning district are supposed to be based upon the carrying capacity of lands within each zoning district coupled with the regulations needed to attain the goals of a comprehensive plan. Paying a fee to exceed those densities cannot be justified on the basis of why the studies conducted in drafting our zoning law nor the secret determination to enable the town board to adapt over a comprehensive plan and our zoning law. The results of this issue are simple and clear. If the adoption of the new comprehensive plan is only in two thousand nine, property owners in the town, property owners who develop their property have noticeably diminished. The justification was a community decision to implement these new regulations in order to enable the town to attain the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan to reduce density during the onset of retaining those objectives. The very concept of density bonuses, as is being presented, is premised upon a contention that greater density than required by the zoning law is in fact available and for a price to be purchased. What property owners were convinced to give up for the good of their community is now for sale. The greater density is in fact the component of the objectives for a comprehensive plan that should be returned to the member of our community and will be taken, not sold as a means to raise revenue. Beyond the question of fairness to property owners and consistency of zoning regulations put into place to achieve the objective of the comprehensive plan, the density bonuses as envisioned in the draft of Affordable Housing Law offer no guarantee that any affordable units will ever be acquired. Perhaps the greatest weakness of our proposed Affordable Housing Law, the stamping of creating affordable housing, is the opportunity for developers and hobby developers, such as the Gardens or the Rockledge Project, to think of an affordable housing trust fund rather than actually building a little affordable housing unit, a Affordable Housing Law appears to mandate. I am not aware of any serious attempt to establish in our town code the means by which this Affordable Housing Trust Fund will create affordable housing. I don't think the union is seriously entertaining in our town, either construction or acting as landlord for affordable housing. The idea of outsourcing the construction and the installation of affordable housing is mentioned, but there could be no guarantee that such an organization can be found to take on this task. If the town is going to guarantee the affordable housing units are going to be built, there is no need for a density bonus, just a requirement, if you want to build a set number of homes in our community, a percentage must be afforded. If you want something built, have a builder build it. The issue of density is perhaps the leading concern expressed at public hearings, helping to do projects in the town that are designed to either attract new visitors or residents. The aspect of density that comes up most often is the question of increased traffic in general on our town roads. Increased traffic that a given development will potentially create. The majority of our town roads, we create on my, that is genuinely a big rural community. Route nine nineteen and three oh eight, federal and state highways do not reflect the narrow, twisting characteristics of our town roads, characteristics that the comprehensive plan emphasizes as both desirable in terms of our community's character and where we've been preserved. Those narrow, twisting roads are not designed to handle traffic, often associated with the presence of large-scale projects such as the Gardens or Grassmere. Both of these highly desirable contributions to our community, and thankfully, both have access to either state or federal highways. Assuming these are any of our county residential districts, and the reduced densities they represent is justified from the stamping of our comprehensive plan, injecting a density bonus based upon behavior taken for social density, kind of a debt justification. So, from a planning standpoint, affordable housing is something we need to do. I don't see the need for density bonuses, and I don't see the justification for them, but we have done these with our comprehensive plan and our zoning law.
Michael, when you were here last and you read a similar statement and made a similar statement, I had asked you that if you had been on the town board in two thousand and nine, would you have voted against density bonuses? And the answer was, yes, I would have. You haven't changed your mind, it sounds like, from your statement, so you would have voted against it. And you do recognize, as a question, that the town board had numerous advisors, spent over a million dollars coming up with a plan, had numerous sessions with the public, and at least that town board included density bonuses in its plan.
I also recognize that I've been on the planning board for about ten years now, I've been the active CEO twice now. I deal with the people in the town of Rhinebeck, I deal on the ground with what's really happening in this community, not with theories, not with what might be or what's not. Well, it really happens. I was talking to someone today whose property had been upzoned, they wanted to create affordable housing on their property and, and through an accessory dwelling unit. Due to the setback requirements and other changes in the zoning law, they probably can't do that now, they could have done it prior to two thousand and nine. So I acknowledge, Joe, a lot of studies, a lot of work went into that, but I'm just speaking from what I've seen, what I've experienced, right here in Rhinebeck, working with the community, not working from studies done by other people.
Any other comments from the public?
I hope we don't regret having you tonight, but first of all, I want to commend both Michael Trimmel and your committee, because the work that they all do is what makes Rhinebeck such a unique place. And my only issue, I'm not going to speak to the density bonus, but my issue is for affordable housing, when I've served on committees to hire teachers and the hospital is hiring nurses between thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars, starting at your salary, I think the amount that is charged for the affordable housing is way too high. And I don't know that I, that I have much support for that, but I know, much to their children, I want all of my children to come back here and live, and I know none of them could afford it at this level. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public, or?
Well, my name is Karen Conwell, and I agree with Mike that density bonus should not be allowed. It's, um, the zoning is set up to protect the suburban communities from overbuilding. Why would we give a developer extra houses to put more traffic on the road just because he pays some money? They don't pay the money anyway, and give them what they should bill. And then we get affordable housing, and we won't have to break the zoning. Thank you.
Anne?
You know, this always comes up with the density bonus, and at some level, it's a philosophical issue that you have to decide. But, and, and depending on how you look at this question, we tend to look at the lack of diversity of housing as one person's fault or the other. But the truth is that it's a community concern, and it has a community solution. It's not, if you, there's a group that want to blame the developers, and then just say, just let them, let them build that. The developers want to blame the zoning, but the truth is, it's the zoning. It's where you're located with proximity to the city, it's your natural resources, your environmental limits, it's a lot of things. And so it's important, so I think it's a similar way, you're zoning, you have your zoning, and that density bonus can be looked at as, as the developers contributing and the communities contributing. So just, you know, it's not one person's fault or the other. And I think that sometimes a density bonus at the right percentage can be a compromise. And a lot of people see it as sort of a giveaway to developers, and just make them do it. And I'm a real believer in everybody in the community contributing to solve a community problem.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say, to the one question as to whether or not the housing will be built, it was asked a couple of different ways, and I know Michael had expressed concern, would it actually happen? The idea is to raise this money and to put it in good hands. And that's why we're doing this. We're not trying to raise a bunch of money and then have it sit there. We're looking to raise money and to actually invest in properties, invest in situations that's going to put out in workforce housing. That's, that's our goal, that's why we're doing it. And that's, we've got to have the money to do that. And, and this we look at as one of the vehicles to get there. The, the next one is the one that, this is the second piece of this, which is a contribution that gets made as new housing is built in general, which we also think is important. And we're, we're going to have to work through exactly what that amount is going to be as new housing is built, what level that kicks in at, those are some of the things we're going to take, come back and take a hard look at. But we're going to come, we're going to correspond that, we're going to, we're going to compare that amount of money with specific initiatives that we're going to want to put into place to get these units built. But the key to all of it, and I think Anne can attest to this, that if you don't have the resources available, you can't do any of these things. And maybe to Michael, it's, it's somehow, the idea that a cash contribution is sufficient, we need the cash, you know, we need to have the money to do these things, or they're not going to happen. So that's what we're trying to do, and that's, that's where we're coming from on this.
Can I just, I live outside of the village, and you're going to give a big corporation a density bonus, and they're going to use my roadways, they're going to use the water that my well runs from, the aquifer, and it's going to pay for affordable housing. That's me giving up the place that I live and the community that, that I live in. I think there's different ways we can raise that money than to give big corporations pass on following what we've decided is the rule of law and how much land you need to build a house.
If you have ideas, specific ideas on how we can raise money, I'd certainly love to hear it, you can send a letter, email to the board.
I mean, as I, as I read your ordinance, your comprehensive plan, the question of, there is sort of a requirement in your state law that you look at housing diversity, and the issue of providing housing diversity in your community was left open, and it is something that you need to bring closure to in, in, in closing this, am I right? I mean, it's not?
Yes, we have a legal obligation to not exclude people.
And if it's a little unusual, it's fine, it's a little unusual that, you know, it was left, so it can't just be left. It does need to be, to be closed.
Let's see, I think we have another gentleman who wanted to say something.
Maybe you can precede me if you choose.
Go ahead, I'll speak ahead.
Okay. It seems to me that...
If you could just tell us your name.
I'm sorry, John Hughes.
John?
Hughes. So my understanding is that this is effectively two-tiered. So in the first place, I'm, if I'm a developer, I'm required to build some sort of affordable housing. If I elect not to, I may pay based on some fee schedule to avoid that.
And also, just to make, so everybody understands, and maybe I should have made this as a premise, the areas of higher density, which would be the R six thousand, which is right outside the village, and that, that's, that's less than a quarter acre, which is more akin to what we were looking at as some of the, it's mandated. You have to build ten percent onsite when you do that development. If you want to take advantage of the senior floating zone, which is a senior housing floating zone, which is also at a higher development for senior housing, you build affordable housing onsite as part of that program. What we're looking at are trying to create mechanisms in the low-density areas that provide a contribution to this program. That's, that's, that's what we're looking at.
So that's just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean... No, no, that's fine. So my question is structurally, is there, is there a structural reason?
May I close it to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. So is there a structural reason why, for larger developments, which is what this seems to be keyed toward, you would not have included the requirement for X percentage of units to have been affordable? And then we wouldn't be dealing necessarily with density bonuses, they would be required to build or to pay in it?
Yeah, the, the issue that we had when we started looking for this was that the areas that we were looking at...
we were looking at outside of the higher-density areas, the amount of land that was required per house was so high that you got into a situation like someone's supposed to take twenty acres of land and build a workforce housing unit. The land itself is worth so much more than that workforce housing unit, that it would be, it just is not a reasonable equation. And that's what we're, that's, and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to come up with something in which there is a, some kind of a financial feasibility around participating as part of this program. And we wanted to be cognizant that we created something that could work when it was actually put into practice. Putting something into practice that is just, you know, an abstraction that nobody can actually comply with did not seem to us to be a reasonable approach to take if we actually want to create a program that can work and have longevity.
Okay, so basically, in order for that to have applied in lower-density areas, it would have structurally been a...
Too significant a penalty?
Yes. To a development?
To anybody. I mean, anybody that was trying to do something in a low-density area, in terms of infrastructure costs, in terms of the land required for that house, in terms of everything that's associated with it, you could get to a spot where the cost to build it's five times what it would be sold under the program. So, it just became a thing of looking at it and saying, you know, just, we can't expect this to actually work. So, we wanted to create a situation in which we did insist that it happen in the areas of higher development, higher density, which are not allowed. But then we created a structure in which there was a cash contribution towards the, towards, you know, the town's goals. First, just mandate for any, for every one of those houses that we built, that was mandated. On top of that, there was a density bonus program that was put into place just for larger pieces of land in order to generate additional revenue.
Sally, you want to talk, or?
I'm going to finish my question. I understand that, I will say that I think the idea of trying to incentivize developers by these kinds of like fifteen percent, twenty percent density bonuses have a tendency to turn around and, you know, bite you in the behind down the road. Thank you.
Joan, you talked about the committee working for about two years on this. I think if we add all the years, it could be five years or even more than that. And if we go back to the beginning of the planning process of the comprehensive plan, God knows how many years went into that. And affordable housing was always a piece, was one of the components of the planning process in order to complete the comprehensive plan. And here we are today discussing many of the issues that we discussed ten years or longer. It is very complicated, it is very complex. What we do know, what we do understand, is that as a community, we have an obligation to have a diversity of housing. This is something that is a requirement and that we have to fulfill in some way. And we have looked at a variety of opportunities and ideas that we feel would work for this community and work in a way that would bring harmony. You know, it has been said today that we're not talking about subsidized housing, we're talking about, you know, people in our family, people, our neighbors, the people that work in our local banks, our local schools, the merchants in our community. And somehow, we have to find a way to address this housing need. Now, we talk about fifteen percent. To tell you the truth, we don't know if fifteen percent is the right number. We've talked about a variety of formulas, and we're not sure if those formulas are the right formulas for this community. But we feel it is time to do something. Let's take a step and let's see if it's going to work. We could always change it if it's, if we find out that it's hurting the community in some way, we're going to turn around and we're going to change it, we're going to address it. Because what we're all trying to do, we're trying to do what is best for the people that live in this community. We're not sure what the exact answers are and what the exact numbers are today. And it's too bad that we have to stand up here after all these years and say that we're still not sure. But it is a very, very complicated issue. You know, affordable housing, workforce housing is being addressed in many communities throughout Dutchess County, throughout New York State, and communities around our country. And we have to do something. And I'm really urging the town board to make a decision, and at this point, to just talk about a concept that we can go back and again, play with the formulas and see what we think are going to be in the best interest of the community. Jonathan talked about, in our comprehensive plan and in our zoning, we have identified high-density areas that will be required, they're going to be mandated to fulfill a certain percentage of affordable housing. We're dealing with the low-density areas, the areas that we have looked at as protecting so much of the natural resources that we have and what we consider precious in terms of environmental issues that have to be protected through low density. And so, with that, the question is, can, can a developer, can, and we don't have to say developer, it could be, it could be any one of you, any one of us, that has a parcel of land that we want to subdivide, and do we have the capacity, can we afford to do it with the low-density zoning that we have? And so, then we talk about fees. Fees that may help us in some way to create a pot of money, to create a housing trust fund that could create a pot of money, so that way we can be creative in how we're going to address affordable housing needs for our community. But I urge the town board to take action. Let's do something. We may screw up, we may be making mistakes, but let's try it and change it if it doesn't work. The time is now to do something, please.
Ann?
So, I wanted to caution you to make sure that not only is the housing affordable, but that it be modest in size, both in the size of the house and the size of the lot. I would not, we would never recommend a small house on a ten or twenty acre lot. Ordinances like this are designed to help people who grew up here, people who work here, to live in the community. They're not meant to be, to be that somebody wins the lottery, right? That you get a little house on twenty acres or ten acres. You should really look for opportunities to build more modest housing and building more near your centers. You have different goals in your plan, preserving your rural character, I have not read your plan, but most of them say supporting your centers. So, that you would look for opportunities near the centers to do that. And that would address traffic issues, so just keep that in mind, it should be modest.
Does anybody else from the public want to say anything about density bonuses?
The only question I have about density bonuses, I have many problems with the density bonuses, but are they carte blanche to no matter where the property is located, what the infrastructure is? Obviously, if a property is on a county road or a state road can handle a density bonus, but are now back roads can't? So, is there a mechanism in place, or will be there a mechanism in place to just not carte blanche, give anybody a density bonus just because they have a big piece of property if the infrastructure can't handle it?
Well, at this point, we've got to identify for all of the large parcels. I mean, we can, we can take a look at, take a look at that question, but we've identified it to be the large parcels of that.
But large parcels are...
But it's not carte blanche in that the...
Back roads, they can't handle the higher density.
The development would have to comply with zoning laws, and there are other zoning laws that would come into effect and environmental...
I mean, I haven't read that section, but, you know, it, the density, it's not like you're going to do a zoning review on the base density without the bonus, you're going to do a zoning review with traffic. And the reality is, I think that the density bonus, the extra units created by the density bonus when you have ten and twenty acre zoning, it's not really going to drive a lot of traffic. You know, we're not, it does, if you have five hundred unit development down in fish scale, you give a fifteen percent density bonus, but if you're having ten or twenty on a ten or twenty acre, you know, so I wouldn't, it'll be looked at, but I don't think it's as big of a priority.
Even if you're in lower-density areas, in most cases, you have fifteen percent increase on what's on the loan number, even for large parcels, especially in ten and twenty acre districts. I mean, the ten acre, you know, the twenty acre district is two hundred acres to be eligible. So, then you have fifteen percent on top of twenty acres, twenty units.
Let's see if there's any other questions, and then I'll open it to the board to ask questions if they wish.
I don't think the planning board should make a jump to a decision like you were saying. I think you should definitely redo everything very carefully and listen to the chairman of the planning board, who has some very good ideas and didn't just throwing out density bonus is a good idea. I think there must be some other way through it. I think affordable housing is a great idea, but there must be some other way to raise the money in crowded housing, the other areas that aren't meant to be dense. Doesn't make sense, but I don't understand it.
Any other comments? Let's see, does any of the board members have any comments or questions?
What could increase density be in the summary of this?
Yeah, I thought it was going to be Mike.
Give an example of what the numbers are that could be helpful.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we look at just the minimum size that we could acquire, I mean, we're talking the twenty acre district, this would not be applicable for any piece of land less than two hundred acres. And if we're looking at the ten acre district, it's a hundred acres, fifty acre in the five, but not really fifty in the five acre, because the way it's calculated in the five acre district, the density, any environmental constraints are subtracted. So, this, a piece of land would need to be able to support ten housing units. So, it would be whatever the gross density was, less in the five acre, less all of the environmental constraints. If that equaled ten, then it would be eligible for a density bonus. And in those cases, it would be fifteen percent on top of ten. So, we're really not talking about a huge increase in the actual number of housing.
And that number would be what?
That number, if we're looking at somebody who was building twenty houses, they would be able to build twenty-three houses.
What's the gross number, Jonathan, on the build-out analysis that...
If everybody in the entire town pursued this and built it out as full volume, we could have a hundred and thirty-two housing units counternormally, that's, that's the extent.
We'd be on the base of an additional almost a thousand. So, we'd build out, if we followed the current zoning rules and built everything we could, we'd build almost a thousand houses, and this would add another hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty-two, yeah. So, we're really, in terms of the actual numbers and the actual number that would be associated with any individual parcel, we're not talking about much.
How many, how many parcels are there in the town that are, that are large enough that you can talk about doing this with?
Did Ted give us the number? Jay, do you remember?
I don't remember the number.
Yeah. Ted's...
Two hundred acre parcels, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, a hundred.
There can't be more than five, six parcels?
Right, but it's the two hundred acres, the hundred acres, and the ten acre, but it's the ten acre zone and the five acre zone.
And it's important, the reason that, just to, some people have been thinking about this, some people have been thinking about it, but just to go back and start by why we selected the large piece of land. And we did that because the town zoning mandates that forced that conservation subdivision process. And that conservation subdivision process requires a huge commitment of open space and requires any development on a piece of land to protect environmental resources, meaning wetlands, steep slopes, habitats, important view sheds. So, if you're looking at a larger piece of land, you've got the ability to put possibly one driveway to a back section of the property that wouldn't be visible from the public roadways, and it mandates that that development be a cluster development. So, we're looking at an additional, small number of additional units in a cluster development on a large piece of land that's protected from a lot of the public view sheds.
So, are you...
Yeah, Michael?
Something I, maybe has been overlooked here, it's called the multifamily housing revision of our zoning law. For example, in the five acre district, we need five acres for the first unit, one and a half acres for the additional units. You already have a density bonus built right in there. Currently, we have a project building up here in the town, and I assume that was probably thinking that was for affordable housing, that sort of thing. The units, this particular project is AINBAC, the average income is four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, two vacation homes. So, we already have a system like that, so you put a density bonus on top of that, and it's going to be considerably more than the number of units in the certain development that you're talking about. And I think you should also understand that the cluster requirement for multifamily housing is not required.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point, and that actually just came to our attention this afternoon. And that's, that's something, Michael, that we're going to definitely take a look at. We weren't aware of some of that when we were, we've been looking at the context of just single-family houses. We're going to go back and take a hard look at what that would mean in terms of multifamily and how that should work.
Do you have a study?
All right, please let her talk, and then if you could come to the microphone.
I don't know if there's any developers in the, in the room, but from a practical and economic perspective, developers cannot purchase an acre and a half for each apartment. I mean, normally, you're talking four to an acre, eight to an acre, so that's the sort of density that developers are looking for if they're going to build multifamily housing to have purchase property at an acre and a half. It's just financially infeasible on the base of five.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you come up?
Can I just ask my question, it's real short. You have to go to the mic twenty more seconds.
You really have to. The people at home will not be able to see it if you talk from their room. Not trying to be difficult.
Before, when you were speaking, you said large parcels of land. How much is a large parcel of land? Because you went from twenty acres to two hundred acres.
Yeah.
Which one are you talking about?
What, when, again, there was a confusion about your question. When we're talking about large parcels of land, what we're saying are parcels of land that are large enough to support ten housing units. So, that would, the size of that parcel would be dependent on the underlying district. If it's in the twenty acre zone, it would need to be two hundred acres. If it's in the ten acre zone, it would need to be a hundred acres. If it's in the five acre zone, it would need to be fifty acres. But in the five acre zone, you also deduct all of the natural resources before you calculate the density. So, in fact, if there's wetlands, if there's steep slopes, all of that gets subtracted out. So, in fact, we probably, yes, so that's, so the size of the parcel would depend on the...
Look, could we go around the board and get various board members' views of what they want to see in a draft law? Who wants to start? Alan, what do you want to see in a draft law with respect to density bonus?
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the things I'd like to have is an answer to my question about how many lots are we actually talking about here? Because it seems to be there are very few parcels in the town that would even be eligible for density bonuses, you know, and mine use that. I mean, okay, so that's the first point. Second point is, I would like to see the relationship between the density bonus program and the master plan criteria that that would have to operate against. I mean, I'm kind of new on the block, so I'm not really sure how much, how much sway the planning board and the zoning laws have to determine how people will use the density bonus. So, the question is, how will they use it? You know, what, what are they allowed to do versus what they would be allowed without?
Yeah, the, well, the way that, the way that the master plan process works is the, it's a four-step conservation subdivision process. So, the idea is that important property assets, meaning view sheds, meaning natural resources, other things that are deemed to be important aspects of that, steep slopes of that property are identified. And it's a process through which, by identifying priority areas, a area is... And it's a process through which, by identifying priority areas, a area is ultimately identified that can support the actual housing units. So, it's, it's really identifying the important areas that are gonna be preserved and protected first, and then in that context, identify where the housing would be placed. So, that, this, any density bonus units would be part of the same process.
Alan, the number of parcels are in the build-out analysis, I don't have that with me, but that has been, uh, catalogued, and, uh, you can see it. Do you, let me push the question, do you wanna see this committee come back with a draft that has density bonuses in, or should the committee forget about it?
No, I'm not against the density bonuses if they're administered properly. The safeguards are there.
Bruce, what do you think?
Well, way back when we were doing this, it was, that was one of the constructs that we put in. So, um, it was, you got a big piece of land, it depends where it is, but it was either sixty percent open, forty percent buildable, or eighty and twenty, and we debated how we could get the affordable housing. But it was always the clustering, it was always the, the, the ability to do everything you needed to do within that same-sized piece of land parcel that was cut out, second parcel was cut out. The, the thing I hadn't thought about was the roads, uh, we hadn't talked about that that I can remember. But we talked about this for years, but, you know, uh, but I, I, I think, I think there's some very valid points against doing it, but I think it's what we did the kind of plan on, and I, I'd like to see the, the proposal.
Elaine, do you want?
I don't have any problem with the density bonus either, I actually agree with Sally, that sometimes you just really have to go forward, this has been a pipe for a long time. Um, and I have total faith in all of the people who care so much about this town, and all of them being on the committee, that they would correct any problems that they see. And I agree with Alan, that the only thing I would like to see is that all of the very valid comments made here tonight are taken into consideration.
Yeah, and, and just, on, on the, on the traffic issue, any, any approval processes is gonna include the full secret review, and that secret review includes the traffic analysis as part of the, the-
Now, Jonathan, can we talk about now the, uh, second topic, which is, uh, funding beside density bonus? And density bonus is part of the funding, there will be a charge for it, uh, the committee is gonna consider what that charge is, and, uh, it is a revenue raising thing. But what about the rest of the funding for workforce affordable housing program? What's the committee's thoughts on that?
Well, what we're, what we're proposing is some sort of a fee structure that, that applies to new housing that gets built in town. And we have gotten some comments back in terms of what would be appropriate, and some of the terms that were raised, that that fee does not apply to people that are not really in a position to afford the payment. So, we're looking at a structure that would probably be a per-square-foot number that would be applied to new housing that was being built in town, but we're considering some, some minimum square footage numbers that would be outside of that, so the fee wouldn't apply to maybe it's a house of fifteen hundred square feet or less, with the idea that that would be, uh, those would be people that would be needing more than that income level, but above those numbers, it would apply. And we've, we've gone around to what that, that number should be, and that's, that's a piece that we're gonna wanna put some more thought into, and we're actually wanna equate it to some specific programs that we want to see implemented. But what we're trying to do tonight is to get, uh, to get some feedback from the board, and hopefully, as to whether or not this basic structure is something that-
So, the committee is thinking of a per-square-foot fee, uh, based on when certificate of occupancy is issued, there would be a required payment. At this point, the committee hasn't fixed on the amount of the fee. There will be exceptions to the fee to take in consideration construction of housing which is already, uh, affordable because of its size and likely cost, and, uh, so, are there any comments from the public on this con, this concept?
And I just, I think it's important to note that we, we, we arrive at this kind of a structure in the context of taking a look at how development actually happens in this town. It's not somebody comes in and builds four hundred houses. It's much more of a scenario where somebody subdivides off one piece, and individual builds a house. I mean, that's typically how things go, or even if it's just a professional builder, it's a professional builder that's building at a local scale, meaning they're building one house. And the housing developments that involve more houses, something like, I don't understand for court, that's off of eight-nine, that's taken, I don't know how many years, but it's like six, seven houses, and three of them have sold in the course of ten years. So, this is not a, a situation that really equates with, with higher, sort of, density development and, and, sort of, big, large-scale commercial builders. So, we're trying to create a structure in which, as housing is added, the way that it actually does get added in this town, there's a mechanism in place to collect a fee around that that can then get you to support the program.
Any comments on this concept before I go around to solicit the board's view, because the committee's asking for direction? Any comments on that? Hearing no comments on that, and do you have any?
I just, I just wanted to say that I guess fee and lieu, you know, whether or not you're building is a very common standard, and it tends, again, to be used where you mandate it, in the areas that are denser, and then you allow fee and lieu in the, in the more rural areas of, of your, of your community.
Hearing no other, or seeing, seeing and hearing no other comments from the floor, could we, uh, go around the board as to what they would like to see in a draft law? Let me start the same order, Alan?
Sure, thanks. Um, my only concern is that I've heard talking about a thousand or fifteen hundred square-foot exemption with the fees, and it seems like it ought to be a credit rather than exemption. In other words, what you don't wanna see, let's say it's fifteen hundred feet, what you don't wanna see is a bunch of houses built that are fourteen hundred ninety-nine square feet, to avoid paying, to avoid paying the penalty on fifteen hundred and one. So, it'd be, it'd be better to start the fees, so, again, I don't know whether the right number is fifteen hundred, but let's say it is, to start the fees at fifteen oh one, rather than have the fee be, uh, whatever, at fifteen oh one, zero to fifteen hundred, it ought to be a dollar more, you know, it ought to be, or start at zero to fifteen hundred, plus something.
Okay.
Bruce, do you wanna address that?
Well, you know my opinion. I, I think it's fine to do it with the, if you're subdividing that kind of thing, but if you're taxing people for doing an individual house, I'm, I'm opposed to it, whether it's a new construction, or an addition, or whatever. Just doesn't seem fair to me.
Can I just, but if, if you, if it goes to the developer, my understanding of building is they pass it along? I mean, when they sell that lot to somebody who's gonna build it, it's gonna be passed along?
Well, what, but if I'm building a house, what am I getting for that? I, I know I'm doing it for the community, I know all this, but why isn't everybody else then? My, my, my point is, I'm not a commercial developer, I am building a house on a lot that I bought, I'm doing, I'm scraping together whatever I can to build it, and you want me to pay an extra whatever, so somebody else? That, that's what you're asking me, right?
The houses that are being, that are being built, people are scraping.
This is, this is, this is, I walked out, but this is individuals, right?
I guess, I guess I have a difficulty of imagining somebody on ten or twenty acres, sort of scraping together, but you can talk more maybe because of what is-
Well, I think, I think Anne's, Anne's-
I get the idea of somebody scraping, but I, I sort of see the bottom of the table.
There's a lot of people here who have the ability to subdivide the land that they have, to give to their children, and, and those children are gonna wanna build a house. And now it's gonna cost those people who, who want to build that house more money for, for something that we took away from them basically in the first place. So, so I, I don't, I just don't agree with the fees.
Bruce, you were on, and Bruce is the only member up here who was on the town board when it was passed, but, uh, that scheme says that one house, there's a fee, that you had a, a fee that wasn't scheduled, but it contemplated one fee for, uh, developments from one to four houses. So, it, it got down to the one-house level, and then you had a different fee, uh-
Yeah, but you're, you're asking direction to the committee now, and I'm giving you my opinion on direction to the committee now.
Elaine, what do you think?
I don't have any problem with it, um, you know, I express some of my concerns when we met, and I don't, if your committee, um, regarding the square footage, the size of square footage, that it wouldn't be the zilpahs that's already squeezed to the limit, that would be bearing a burden, so, and as long as that's being addressed, I have no problem with it.
Is that even legal?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Could, could you even do that? Could you even say, you know, we're gonna, the little ones are not gonna bother, but the bigger ones we're going to, and then the little ones put an addition on two years later, that they're as big as the big ones? Is, is that legal?
Well, we're certainly, I, I don't think, John is a lawyer unless you've changed, uh, it, whatever, whatever is drafted, we'll, we'll run it by-
A number of them do, a number of workforce housing provisions that include fee schedules do carve out smaller houses as being exempt.
No, what you're saying is you build a house fifteen hundred feet at a time.
And then you, and then you build it out every time. Someone that's doing that, someone's, someone's going through a lot of time to help with your point, your point being that fee in that case. Uh, I mean, they certainly could, but you know-
How much are we talking about?
Uh, you know, that's something that we're gonna come back at, but we, we considered a dollar foot as one, at one point, and if we have a fifteen hundred square foot exemption, then we're talking about just the square foot that would be over that, and then, in that construct. So, someone would be spending a lot to, to-
So, but is it enough to do anything with? So, then, my concern is, that doesn't sound like a whole lot of money upfront, but then we're gonna need, we're gonna see we need more money, so we're gonna crank up the rates, that kind of thing.
Well, the earlier you start, the greater the chance of you collecting money. If you delay another two years, that's-
Yeah, I know, but I'm not sure what I'm doing with the money yet either.
Uh, well, Anne, you wanna talk briefly about what other towns and what people can do with money for affordable housing programs?
You know, um, one of the things is, usually, if there's money available, you will find a partner. Um, and I know Hudson River Housing has been a really good partner for you, but you can also partner with private developers, and you have a really great committee, who I don't see walking away from, okay, now we have the money, let's walk away.
But how much is money? How, are we talking five hundred dollars or five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, for something, I mean, we talked to Hudson River, and this, I don't know if we're gonna pursue it, but we talked to Hudson River Housing about the idea of a, a down payment program, in which people that meet a criteria get some kind of assistance in making a down payment. That's a ten thousand dollar number. So, ten thousand dollars could be the number that gets somebody that is, is, is struggling to come up with a down payment on a house, the ability to buy that house. So, ten thousand dollars matters. Um, so even if we're collecting five hundred dollars from somebody who's building a new house, we do that twenty times, we've got somebody's down payment.
But the committee would come back to the town board before any program to spend money for approval.
Probably what you need to think about is what your community wants. Do you want ownership? Do you want rental? Do you need a little bit of both? You know, what, what, are you doing seniors, you're doing younger people, a little bit of both? You know, we often need a lot of that, you, you sort of, so you start there from the need, and then once you do that, you can work with a partner for that.
Okay, I think we've beaten the topic to death. I think the committee knows what the board wants to see in a-
Some of the board.
Yeah.
Watch.
Uh, so, let me go to another whole topic. Thank you, Jonathan, and everybody who spoke. Mr. Maguire, has the gurus gotten together, and do they have something for us, or should we make you wait longer?
Thank you, John Maguire. John and Dan went to resolve, to reword the-
Oh, okay, so they'll come back.
They're on the way back.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Are you skipping the OSHA training tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sacrifices are-
The next thing on the agenda is a report from the zoning board of appeals.
... for us, and Kathleen Durham, the executive director, wanted to express her thanks to the town board and our community.
They had to find another venue because of the government's, or the-
Government shutdown.
That's right.
I didn't get the award this year, but they're looking at me next year.
[laughing]
Did you get that? All right, motion second to adjourn.
Motion, second.
What was favorite item?
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
George now, he's good to go.
Yeah, and in the concept of shared services, Jay and I spoke briefly before this meeting, but we're half-looking for a new software package for the planning and building department, and, um, the county's indicating that they have a cloud computing system, which means it's, it's out there, up in a new realm, and , um, we're gonna look into that, where it's our local vendor, like we said in one of the public hearings earlier, a local person is the internet or the software source for it, but, uh, so we'll look at that too. I think that'd be pretty exciting, if, apparently, Sam could work off his droid right in the field and so forth, with the way it's set up and everything, so it's, uh, pretty interesting stuff. And, uh, but thank you, Jay.
You bet.
Let's see, we're kinda bouncing around, I think, Steve, we had you talk about water, can we-
Yeah, it's gotta change tape.
Oh. We have, uh-
From five to seven.
Thank you.
And, so, once again, if you do this audit, it's free if you are less than two hundred percent of the average median income in Dutchess County, which is about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So, if your household income is under that, you get this free audit. It gives you a report card that tells you, um, it's a definite number with how weak your, weak your house is compared to a well-built house, um, and then it tells you how to fix it.
Eric, could you just go over the, I'm sorry, the eligible, is it income or is it house?
It's income-based, it's a free audit, yeah. So, um, it's free if you are, um, below a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the average median income in Dutchess County, for a household.
Average median income?
For the household. That's two hundred percent of the average.
Two hundred percent of the average.
Two hundred percent. That still sounds too high.
I'll have the form with me, but it's on the back of all the audit applications, so we flip it over and check.
Eighties, no, a hundred percent, the forties is-
Important that we have a secretary. I spoke to Elizabeth, she said that, um, she thought that the board would be willing to keep J.D. non-part-time, she's actually starting another full-time job working for the county, so, we're not sure how much time she's gonna have to give us, but at least be at our meetings, and take the notes, and write up the paperwork, stay in communication with people for us. Until such time as you can hire a new secretary for us. And, uh, we're unclear just what exactly the process would be, whether you're gonna have a subcommittee that will interview applicants, uh, we'd certainly like to be involved in that process, if, if that's the case.
Well, the process is, we have run an ad, we've put it on our website, uh, we're starting to get applications. Generally, on hiring, it's, the whole town board interviews people and makes a selection. I'm not aware of- I'm not aware of necessarily committee members coming, but I guess I don't see any problem with it.
I think the selection process.
Pardon me?
I'm Stocker, I'm the vice chair. People would help your selection process because we can tell the person what they actually have to do. Since Mike's been on, what, 20 some odd years? I've been on 10. We can tell them what they're up against, how they have to interact, who they're going to interact with, how many hours they're going to have to put in, that kind of stuff. So I think it can only help in the selection process, but we're as busy as we have been in recent memory with applications, and some of them are substantial, so. And there's some more cases on the horizon, which are also going to be somewhat controversial, and we really need the support. Having continuity for the short-term.
One question we had, as we have been discussing it among the board members, till we get somebody, could you go to one meeting a month for, you know, a month or so till we hire somebody?
I don't think we can, given how many applications we have. Plus, we have, once we close a public hearing, we have to make a determination within 60 days or so. Sometimes we're handcuffed because of the time constraints, but literally, we must have what, eight or 10 applications. And some of them are substantial, it's not the, you know, lot line variance kind of stuff, that's easy. We have some use variances, very unusual. Two use variances, we have two cases that are in the historic district, and we're having to continue public hearings about those, and it would be.
When is your next meeting scheduled?
April 2nd. Now, Elizabeth had mentioned that it might be possible to keep JD non-as an hourly wage worker for the amount of time we meet her, and she could be at our meetings and possibly write the paperwork. So that buys us a little time before we have to have a full-time replacement. But I also have some thoughts about how the replacement should be utilized. We think that maybe one secretary that services both our board and the planning board might be a good idea, so that there's better communication. We know you longer have Gina, our liaison to this board.
I'm ready to speak. Just give me a second.
And anything that can make the communication better, and having one common secretary who does both boards, might be a really good idea.
Might be.
Gina Fox, I love that idea, Mike. I've always been a proponent of better communication between zoning and planning, and I urge this board to do whatever you can to assist them. They're backlogged, they are swamped, they've had to miss a couple of meetings because they were missing a quorum, and they're doing everything they can do to provide for the public. So I'm in support of getting JD or someone per diem until you get someone full-time, so, and I don't think they should go to one meeting a month, that's just my.
No, I suggested the one meeting just for a month or so, not a permanent thing.
Thanks, you guys.
The town board is aware of the issue, and we're trying to resolve it. Let me thank you. You know, we have an excellent zoning board of appeals, you work very hard, and we will try to facilitate a reasonable way to proceed, so let me leave that in Elizabeth's hands.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Maguire, there's still, so we'll go to some resolutions when they come. Just wave, and I'll interrupt what we're doing. Moving on to the resolutions, we have, we have resolution 201-4099 approving preliminary accounts payable abstract, 47 checks totaling $164,646.18. And let me say to the public who's not aware of the process, each town board member looks over each accounts payable, checks it, and signs off on it. That is the process, and we have been over it. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Okay.
Would anybody like to second the okay? All in, any discussion? All in favor of?
Aye.
Turning to the second resolution, it's a preliminary capital abstract, projects abstract for $208.50. Any discussion? Would, and somebody like to make a motion? Alan so moves.
Oh, a second.
Okay, a surprise.
Touche.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? We also have, have resolution 201-4104 for budget transfers and amendments. That was circulated, I think it's in the book. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
Motion.
Would somebody like to second that?
Okay. Sure, it's not 4101. Yeah.
If there's, is there any discussion? Can we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The second item, or the next item on the agenda, is a motion to approve the union contract for the highway and maintenance departments. And the contract has been subject of negotiation from December 2012, when the old contract ran out, until February 2013. So we've been discussing it with representatives of the union and with the shop steward for over a year. What we have before this town board for ratification is a four-year contract, and the contract's terms have been, have been ratified by the union. So the contract will take effect if this board decides to ratify it. On behalf of the town board, Bruce and I have been part of negotiating team, together with a labor consultant. The union was represented by the International Brotherhood of Teamsters. They supplied two people to help the negotiations, and the shop steward and assistant shop steward were a part of those negotiations. Let me just go through the highlights of the four-year contract, and the major changes that were made from the previous contract, which the union has been operating under till a new contract is entered into. All union members henceforth will pay something toward their medical plan. Currently, the town provides 100% of medical benefits. And the only members of the union who paid something toward that was those hired after 9-1-2004, and they paid 10% of the premium. Now, the town pays on top of the premium, and really before the insurer has to pay out money, we in effect self-insure up to about $5,000. And then the plan, in effect, kicks in after we pay the first $5,000. So for persons hired before 9-1-04 who now pay nothing, there's a graduated schedule that in 2014, they'll pay 1.5% of the premium. In 2015, they'll pay 3% of the premium, and in 2016, it would go up to 5% of the premium. Those who now pay 10% of the premium will continue to pay 10%, and new employees would pay 12.5% of the premium. With respect to wages, there is somewhat of a departure from past custom, where there would be a percentage increase. And this time, it's not a percentage increase, but it's a certain number of cents per dollar, I'm sorry, per hour. So in, for 2013, and we're going retroactively back because the union members were working without any pay increase under the old contract, there would be a 25 cent per hour increase. For 2014, it would be a 50 cents an hour pay increase. For 2014, for 2015, there would be a 55 cent pay increase per hour. And for 2016, it would be a 55 cent per hour increase. What this does is that the people who get the most per hour, their percentage increase as a percentage is less than the people who get a lower per hour amount. And as I say, it's a four-year contract. Both Bruce and I, as the negotiating group, recommend that the board adopt it. We can still vote in favor of it. Are there any questions from the board before I open it to the public, if there's any questions? Does anybody have any comments before we vote on ratification of the contract? Now, I must say, there is one open issue of interpretation of a specific provision which relates to I-class pay, and there is a difference between the negotiating groups as to the meaning of it, and that will be decided by a mediator arbitrator, so to speak, as to the meaning of that provision. So let me, would somebody like to make a motion, which is in our book here, to ratify the union contract?
Motion.
What are the ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm too tired from all these years of negotiating this thing.
Okay, hearing no nays, the contract is ratified. Are we ready, John, to talk about? And this is item number six. And, I don't know, does it make sense to take it in pieces so we can vote on it, or should we vote on the whole thing? How do you want to do it?
The way that I.
So the way that I have the resolution written, it does everything, okay? So the sequence of action items at the end of the resolution just goes through the things that need to be done. So in accordance with our discussions earlier, Dan and I went back and we made a change to the description of the district in both the resolution and also in the proposed law. We also made the change to the map, which you have in front of you, so I think it should be in good shape.
So let me call for, well, let's see, is there anybody who wants to say anything? So let me call for a vote on adoption of the resolution that we.
We had a motion yesterday.
Did we have a motion already? No.
No, I move.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'd like a roll call vote. Elaine?
Aye.
Bruce? Myself? Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And, okay, and you two will implement it. Mr. Maguire, I hope you will join us for other sessions. The town board meeting would not be the same without seeing you, so thank you for your patience. This was being hammered out. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is number five, and this is the release from the workforce housing program, certain units that were part of the workforce housing program. The reason for this is, under the agreement with the developer of the gardens, that the developer has the right to withdraw units from the workforce housing program if they are not sold within 180 days of notice of sheet-rotting. And there were two units that, well, one unit was sold. There were four units in Phase 2A. One unit has already been sold, a second unit has been spoken for, and although 180 days have gone by, the developer will allow that unit to be sold under the workforce housing program, provided we throw in, in the reclaimers, so to speak, one of the units in Phase 2C, which had not been sheet-rotted. So that's why we have three units. Are there any questions from the board? Public, any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm trying to take a logo.
Okay. I think, John, we've done number six already. Number seven is a resolution allowing the town hall use for center cloths.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next resolution is to allow the use of the town hall for a repair cafe.
Motion. Second. I did something. Who's going to manage the repair cafe?
Joe, wherever Joe is.
Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is. Can I say it, Joel?
Joel, we're not there yet at the end. Or are you talking about the repairs?
This is my phone.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, Joel Tyner. And there are 400 of these all over the world. I just got off the phone with the guy. His name is John Hackman, who's been doing it for about a year, almost a year in New Pauls. They're wildly successful, it's a community-owned enterprise. Basically, people bring their old lamps, vacuum cleaners, alarm clocks, radios, toys, espresso machines, toaster ovens, computers, and other people come and fix them. And there was a big article in the Daily Frame at the end of January about this. And the way they work it in New Pauls, they have different workstations, clothing and textiles, dolls and stuffed animals, woodwork, simple jewelry repair. Sent an email yesterday to the board. I know Bruce, you were saying maybe it might be more appropriate to do something like this out of the building at the transfer station, which is fine with me. It's whatever you guys think may possibly be more appropriate. Originally, I was shooting for Saturday, April 26. Typically, when they do it in New Pauls, they do it for four or five hours. But then there's a big thing happening at Clinton on the 26th of April. So I was going to try to, I think I was telling John, the town clerk, going to shoot for some Saturday in May for four hours, from noon to four, if it was okay with you. And the guy that I just spoke with, the international website is repaircafe.org. It started in Edelman's five years ago. The guy who's been doing it in New Pauls, I asked him, well, what about local fix-it people? Are they threatened by this, you know, might take their business? And he said that every single local fix-it person that he's spoken with loved the idea because it was sort of their opportunity to sort of put themselves forward and actually get some face time with the community and help promote themselves and their abilities. So I don't know, to me, it's kind of a win-win. And I'm hoping that you guys might allow it to happen once. Jess Scott, from the Conservation Advisory Board for the town, has already said she wants to work with me to make it happen, if you guys are into it. Sent an email to everybody I know in Reinbeck yesterday. There's a woman named Betsy Zubroff. Not even sure I've met that person, but she's emailed me back. She wants to work with me to help make it happen, if you guys could let us try it once.
And all we would have to do is provide the space.
Yes, sir.
And you would make an announcement that the town is not liable for any of the repairs being made? That these are independent people?
At this moment, that the town of Reinbeck is not, and I will announce it, as liable.
Yes, and nobody changes hands, yes.
That is correct. If they need parts, they can go see the person outside. Yep, and it says that the way they work it in New Pauls, they look for volunteers, carpenters, volunteer seamstresses, volunteers who might be able to help with jewelry repair, like computer stuff. I will frankly acknowledge and share with you that what if we start one of these and then five, or 10, or 20, or 30, or 40 people show up with their broken stuff, and there's nobody here to fix it? I don't know. But there are already people who have indicated to me that they're willing to work with me on this. So it's not just one guy trying to reach out to expert fix-it people. I'm hoping, since today is the 24th of March, we're shooting for some Saturday in May, that that's enough time to reach out to people. So it's not just going to be people coming here with stuff to be fixed. There'll also be some experts here going to fix.
Does it make sense to have Joel come back with how many people he's lined up to actually fix things? So we don't have just one person here? I don't know, what are other people?
I'll tell you, I'm shaking my head. Because if we give him a date, then he can work towards it to get it here and get the publicity. If we're just trying, if we're going to make him come back and before we say yes...
I agree with you.
It's defeatist.
My wife's our manager, Joel.
Elaine, you have?
I agree with that.
Okay. So are we agreeable to allow the town hall to be used?
You want to do it by roll call?
I was going to say as a fix-it shop. But are all in favor of allowing this use?
Aye.
Aye.
I love you all dearly, thank you.
Okay.
That was uncalled for, Joel.
The next item on the agenda is Matt Rosenberg.
Joel, I'm sorry, Joel, can I just?
Yes.
Can we go back? Because we never do liaison reports on first page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. But there is actually something that I'd like to discuss with the board.
Yep.
As you all know, I'm liaison to the Animal Control Committee. And I received a phone call from Roger Newkirk, the animal control officer, the enforcement officer. And he invited me to come look at the kennel, which he said has been, has been having a lot of problems with for a long time.
Kathy, can you, we're talking about the kennel.
The kennel?
The kennel, the old kennel.
Yeah, Roger Newkirk had called me recently and asked me if I would come down there and take a look at the kennel. He said he's been a disrepairer for quite some time. And he said that there are two problems. One is that because the parking lot has been repaved regularly, it's put the kennel lower and lower so that a lot of water collects down there to the point where he's had to build some pallets to keep the dogs up out of water. I did take some photos, which I sent to the board. It showed some of the water stains and it showed some of the damages that he was referring to. I asked him, in fact, I'll read you the conversation that we had. He said the problem exists because over the years, the parking lot has been paved and repaved. The kennel sits on a cement slab, and the parking lot is much higher than the kennel. Years ago, they were the same level, but the parking lot has been raised by resurfacing the parking lot several times over the years. And now one water runoff goes directly into the kennel. And he said he's had to build pallets closed so the animals aren't underwater. I asked if he had any recommendations. And he said that the town should consider either inserting drains in front of the building toward the highway department, or dig a trench and lay pikes and gravels to collect the runoff. That's problem number one. Problem number two is that there are three cage runs out back, and the wire grates on the three cages have rusted over the years. In fact, the photos, one of the photos that I sent to you showed you where one bar actually rusted in half so that it's created an opening that the small dogs can actually escape through. And he said the problem is that the wire grates on the three cages out back have rusted over the years. Some grates have rusted off completely, which is the photo that I just referred to, so that small dogs can escape. I asked him again if he had any recommendations for this. And he said that the cages are all right, but that the wires need to be reinforced, that the stalls themselves need to be stabilized. So that was the conversation I had with Mr. Newkirk. And I told him I would bring this to the board tonight and contact him back and let him know what discussion we had about this. And I thought it was important for you guys to see the photos. I'll send them to you too, since you weren't on the email where I sent the photos, so you can see the damage that he's referring to and the problems.
Before Kathy speaks, I think we probably need some kind of recommendation from our maintenance supervisor and from Kathy for the highway because it's located down there. So maybe at the next meeting, we can have a recommendation from both of those sources. But Kathy, if you want to say something, can I pull the mineral away?
Sure, thank you. Yes, I thank you for pointing that out because the dog warden facilities are a separate entity. They're located on the highway department grounds, the area, but it's not run by or maintained by the town highway department. I do think that you do want to absolutely reach out to Bob Fitzpatrick, your building and facilities maintenance person, regarding the repairs to the actual caging. It sounds like that should be something that he would be the best to give you a proposal on. It probably wouldn't be that difficult. Regarding the drainage to the area, I'm very well aware of the problem there. In fact, when we had Hurricane Irene, the waters were rising so fast from the kill that runs through there that I was actually concerned and had, and I thank you, Bruce, I don't forget that you were there and helped out with that, as did Gina Fox, rescue, take a dog out of the facility because it was actually in danger of probably having drowned, if that had continued. So it is set low for the catastrophic events that we've been getting. Regarding ongoing paving there, that's just, that is not a part of it. That's not a contributing factor. I don't know the last time that the parking lot was repaved. It certainly needs it. The only area that's gotten any shim is the area, which is far enough away from that, over right by the entry to the storage bays under the salt shed eaves. That has been paved, there has been paving there at least nine years. That doesn't mean that the area is not low. It absolutely is low. And there absolutely should be something to address it. Again, you know, I think what you may want to do is you didn't talk about either really putting in drainage there, but it's stormwater drain. You're going to have to find a way of funding that, if that's what you want. And somewhere to put that, there is the kill, but you're putting stormwater in. But we could probably do sand filtration or something like that. But again, there's dollar costs associated, which is a part of the board. So if you want these proposals, I'd be more than happy to help bring some proposals forward. But you need to be aware that this is a fix-it. You're going to have to fund. It's not, because it happens to share the space, it's not a highway issue. It's not a road issue. The other option that you may want to consider, rather than working the land around it, is raising the building, or third option, relocating the building. So you have a number of things to think about. And again, help you in any way that I can think these things through. But it is something that's going to have to come from what you want to do and how you want to get these proposals.
But I'll reach out to Bobby, as you suggested, and get...
Well, let Bruce talk to him because you're the liaison to Bobby. And ask him to take a look at it, Bruce. We have talked about, we have talked about relocation in the past. And I think people felt that that was, board members felt that was not a good idea.
Well, it seems like some of the things that Mr. Newkirk suggested, you know, probably wouldn't be a lot of money, or, you know, I don't know. But, yeah, but I mean, so you want me to reach out to Bobby? Because I'm happy to.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll reach out to Bobby and let him know what Mr. Newkirk recommended and ask him his opinion.
Okay, and I think you should tell him that Bobby should. We're talking about drainage, maybe to talk to Kathy.
They do include me there, don't they?
Yeah, she has to be included.
Which is the only last point that I want to make. I think it really would be a great thing for, Joe's been down there, Bruce's been down there, Elizabeth's been down there, but the newer board members, Elaine and Alan, I don't think have been on site to see the dog facility nor the highway department. So I think I would like to suggest, and again, extend an invitation to you guys to come down and let me give you a tour around there. We are the biggest draw drain, if you want to put it that way, no pun intended, on the budget. So I think it would really be a good thing for you to come down and take a look around there. I would be more than happy to host you and give you a very entertaining tour.
No doubt. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosenberg, I think you're next on our agenda.
Is Mr. Rosenberg last?
I think he's last. No, I think, well, let me, I don't know if Joel has anything or not.
No, Joel's the... No, I think he's done. This is also especially to the benefit of Elaine and Alan, who was not present at the November 12th meeting where we discussed Victor Cornelius's proposal. And I know you heard it, Bruce heard it, I just, to the benefit of them, proposal for asking for a grant from the state for a sewage and wastewater system for Reincliffe. And so I wanted to thank the opportunity, the board, the opportunity to follow up on the last discussion we had. This will take about 10 minutes, I need to say. Sorry, I'm just trying to speed it up. So since that meeting, Victor Cornelius gave the presentation, I had a chance to thoroughly research the history of Reincliffe's sewage issues and compile a sort of short synopsis with the chronology of everything going back to 1975. So in 1975, the health department conducted dye tests and found 15 of 40 dwellings failed in Reincliffe. These were concentrated around Shatson, Charles, and Kelly Street.
What year was this?
1975.
Seventy-five.
I will email you everything I'm saying so that you also have a record of it. In 1978, Reincliffe was included in a sewage study by Brown and Larrys, a possible inclusion in the town's master plan, but it was determined to be too costly. By 1980, an advanced study was done that focused on just sort of an 80-hours houses in Reincliffe through a gravity collection system. In 1982, I'm sorry, 1981, that solution was rejected as too costly by the New York State Department Audit and Control. In other words, the state found that 80 houses were just too few for such an expensive project. In 1982, we found a September DEC memo, which said essentially, and I quote from the memo from the DEC, "Not feasible to place Reincliffe on priority list. Solutions not implementable, and effects on Hudson are minimal." Again, that was in September of 1982. In November of 1982, the DEC memo said that, quote, "The volume of sewage is insignificant." Moving to 1987, Amtrak also installed a 1,300-gallon-per-day waste treatment plant that operates to this day, which also alleviated some of the problems of raw sewage going in. Now, in the late '80s, there was a lot of push for sewage in Reincliffe because there was a desire by the Creed property to develop 400 houses on that property. Some of you may be aware of this. Some people, it was a long time ago. Spoken to a lot of people involved in fighting against that. And essentially, Creed was, again, density bonus. They were asking for density bonuses for allowing Reincliffe to use some of the sewage plants that were rent-built. So the health department was sort of encouraging this at the time. So in 1988, the health department went with the Reinbeck town engineer to discuss a new sewer district that would include Creed, Wine Garden, which is now known as the Gardens. And the town was, at the time, hesitant to include Reincliffe. And as we know, the Gardens, right after that, joined for a few years onto the Aster processor. So they're being processed by the main plant for the village. And thankfully, the Creed property never got built. So it left Reincliffe again, isolated with no natural plant to join onto to make some sort of cost-effective plan. So in 1990, the town got some funding to make a comprehensive engineering study to do a sewage plant in Reincliffe. This was also during the same time that Creed was actively pursuing building the 400 houses. It hasn't stopped by 1990. So the complete engineering study of viability cost, placement of a waste treatment plant for Reincliffe, was conducted by D.F. Wheeler Engineering Rev. who's still there. This was done based in part on the notion that Creed development would move forward, but did not actually include the Creed additions in its assessments. In other words, it assumed that the treatment plant would be placed on Creed property for what was to be a density bonus. But for the purposes of the report, it didn't include any of Creed's actual buildings in the treatment plant. So this was an estimate based on just treating Reincliffe. Okay. So moving forward a little to 1991, the health department cited Patty's Tavern. Anyone remembers that? It's now where the post offices in Reincliffe. They were cited for dye test failure, as was, anyone remembers Ed De Bias, who ran the hotel at the time. The hotel had no septic system in 1991. It essentially went directly into the Hudson River. So this was one of the biggest concerns because it was one of the biggest public places outside of the train station. So there was a wastewater committee formed in Reincliffe. In 1991, the Reincliffe Wastewater Committee conducted the first Hamlet-wide dye test survey since the previous one in 1975. They tested and surveyed 82 houses that participated. Fifteen were determined to have problems, and that would be 18% of the 80 houses. Thirteen of these...
Excuse me, when you say dye test, you're looking at the dye coming into the drinking water from the sewer?
Not drinking water, because all the drinking water is supplied by the, the drinking water supply is different. It's just the dye would have been put down in the toilets, and then it would be seen in the storm drains where it should be. So that would be it. Because almost nobody in Reincliffe has drinking water except from the village drinking water supply. It's not a well issue.
So they would look for the dye when, after a rain to see if it...
No, no, they would flush very concentrated dye. This is done today when people buy a house in Reincliffe or anyone who has a septic system. You flush large packages of extremely colored dye. And you will see if the septic is failing or it's either bubbling up, or in the case like this, they were looking for storm drain runoff.
Okay, outside the house, whether it would bubble up on the lawn or when it's going into the sewer?
Or directly to the storm drains that are next to the house. So if you suddenly see a deep red dye in the storm drain, you'd be like, okay, this is clearly not supposed to be here. Again, that was back in the 1990s. So in the early '90s, after the Creed development was rejected... was rejected, many of the homes that failed, 13 of the homes that failed the survey by the Rhine Cliff Water Committee, were actually already cited by the health department. So in the early 1990s, there was a grant program that wasn't a block grant, but individuals could apply. And almost all of those houses, to our knowledge, applied, and quite the house I live in now actually applied to the previous owner. And they got money and new engineered septic systems were put in to fix the failed systems that the health department had noted. Moving forward to 2004, the Rhine Cliff Hotel was approved for a 7,280 gallon per day waste treatment plant that functions to this day. It's totally certified by the health department. And that was one of the major concerns back in the 90s was the hotel was generating a lot of septic. So additionally, in the last five to 10 years, we've seen houses like Grinnell, Kelly, and various other streets completely replace their septic systems with DEC-approved systems, obviously, in order to get them put in. They're all approved. So many of the houses that might not have even been problems then have already had septic systems replaced. So I want to just go back to the, that's pretty much the chronology. But going back to the 1990 Wheeler Engineering Report, which was prepared for the town on central sewage collection in Rhine Cliff, makes a number of really, I think, very important points in consideration of any kind of sewage treatment plant grant. So they noted a number of serious construction problems in Rhine Cliff. One, shallow depth to bedrock in many locations. Two, generally narrow streets with high potential for utility conflict, specifically all of the water mains that come into all the houses would be conflicting with any sewage system that could be put in. And another one which would concern anyone with houses that are on Kelly Street, or any street that's close to where they would be drilling, the close proximity of building foundations, which because of the shallow bedrock could easily be damaged in digging these large trenches for any kind of gravity sewage system. In addition, the report states, you have to remember, the report was really geared towards the idea that the only way you could have a sewage system in Rhine Cliff was to combine it with something like Creed, possibly the Gardens, something to make it more relevant. But by itself, the report says, and I quote, "It would not be prudent for the town to pursue construction of their own central sewage plant to serve Rhine Cliff. There is an absence of suitable land in Rhine Cliff. The only town-owned land is currently used," and I say currently, this was in 1990, "for recreational purposes. In addition, the parcel of land would require pumping of the discharge to the Hudson River. The streams in the Hamlet would require more advanced waste treatment and would escalate sewage treatment plant cost out of the affordability range." What they're talking about there is under the Clean Water Act, the only way to do any sewage treatment is to directly go into the Hudson, because then you can do secondary cleaning as opposed to tertiary cleaning, which is absolutely too expensive. So it can be less clean when you dump into a larger body of water. It has to be much more clean if you're dumping into a stream or a smaller body of water. And I quote further from the report, "The preparers do not see any other viable sites in close proximity to the Hamlet of Rhine Cliff which could serve as a site for sewage treatment plant." So it's clear from the report that the only way the town could build a sewage treatment plant for Rhine Cliff would be to purchase private land on the Hudson that would also be far enough away from the public water supply for the village. At the time, that was the only place that they considered was the Creed property. Because the plant also can't be too close to the water intake, because it is, although a treatment plant producing sewage, it's a smaller quantity, but it's concentrating it, and it's a small amount, so it has to be under federal laws, a certain distance from any sewage, you know, anywhere where you're getting your drinking water from, obviously. So Mr. Gilb, actually, you asked at that meeting on November 12, what would the cost to operate a sewage plant be? And no one even guessed, actually. It was just like, let's just ask for the money to build it. We don't know how much it'll cost to operate. Well, the Wheeler study actually specifically addressed operations and maintenance costs on page 17 and 18 under Will Knievel. The whole Wheeler Engineering Report, although I know it's in possession of the town. So I'm gonna quote you from the $1990, and then I'll translate them into $2,014. They came up, as any good engineering report, with three different options. So option one was a gravity system that would have an O and M cost of $135,000 in just the first year. Option two was a low-pressure force main that would have an O and M cost of $139,440. And option three was a septic tank effluent system that would O and M cost $154,240.
Excuse me, what was your first one, please?
$139,000, $135,000, excuse me.
Thank you.
So if we use standard U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index Inflation Calculator, which you can find online, you can take the least expensive O and M option from the Wheeler study at $135,000 annually, $1990, convert them to $2,014. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it would be $242,505.
Two hundred and what, forty?
Quarter of a million.
Quarter of a million dollars. So if we take a quarter of a million dollar operating and maintenance cost, and divide that by 150 houses, which is the total makeup of Rhine Cliff, and I should say that the health department never conceived of all 150 houses actually getting a sewage system. They actually stated in their 1989 report that they only conceived of 80. But for the purposes of dividing this number, we'll start with 80, 150 houses. That would be a tax burden on everyone in Rhine Cliff of $1,616.70 per year operation and maintenance. Based on the engineering report that the town already commissioned for a Rhine Cliff sewer system. Now, if you did only 80 houses, because actually 150 probably could never be done anyway, because many of them were in places this system could never reach, that would be a tax burden of $3,031.22 per resident homeowner of Rhine Cliff. So finally, I just want to quickly address the stormwater issue. Given the fact that the town previously commissioned an engineering report in 1990 that determined there is, and I quote, "Shallow depth to bedrock in many locations in close proximity to building foundations. It would seem that any large-scale excavation needed to install a new stormwater system would almost certainly damage numerous building foundations. In addition, the fracturing of bedrock would certainly lead to changes in water flow, which could in turn lead to flooding basements that previously had no infiltration problems." Additionally, there are a number of houses for things like B-dry systems in Rhine Cliff, where they now directly pump their just regular water that floods their basements into the stormwater drains. Otherwise, they would flood the streets. This happens, whether it's totally legit or not, I can't say, but it definitely happens. If you put a new storm drain in, all of those are gonna have to be disconnected, and I assure you, they're gonna have to have all that water tested before they ever can be reconnected. And all you have to have is enough organic matter, a few, a slightly high coliform count. Those people are not gonna be able to rejoin a new stormwater drain, and then they have no place to pump their basement water except out onto the street. So in short, I just don't think it would be a good idea to pursue any kind of major sewer or stormwater system for Rhine Cliff, because it's like a Pandora's box. There's numerous problems that this could create, including an enormous tax burden. If this was something that was actually a problem, that recent health department problems were coming up, then maybe it's something to consider. But the last time we have any health department activity here is in the 1990s. And since then, we have thousands of gallons of DEC septic systems functioning now for the hotel, Amtrak. We have new owners who are creating new septic systems, and we have an approach which is perfectly viable. Lastly, for those who question the viability of the current system, I want to just leave you with a statement from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, and I quote them saying, "Nearly one in four households in the United States depends on an individual septic system, also referred to as an onsite system." And I quote from EPA, "Adecquately managed decentralized wastewater systems are a cost-effective, long-term option for meeting public health and water quality goals, particularly in less densely populated areas," unquote.
Less densely.
No, Rhine Cliff.
Is very dense.
There is a section on Kelly Street which is dense, and there's other sections right around. But when you're talking about a total density of approximately 80 houses, the cost of doing that is very difficult. But I will take it that there's some density.
Well, I think when they say less dense, they mean five, 10-acre parcels, that kind of thing, rather than five, 50 of them.
They've got them at approximately 60% of Rhine Cliff is in a density of less than an acre.
What, Wheeler did the Vanderburg Cove thing, too. And the numbers are, this difference is huge, because Vanderburg Cove now is $1,200 a year, and 400 of that is loans.
Right. I think part of the problem is the construction of the gravity system and where they have to put it in relation to the Hudson is more complicated, and the roads and the topography of it. In the report, they talk a lot about the topography of Rhine Cliff being difficult.
So you're counting that as O and M?
No, I'm just guessing that there may be more maintenance involved in the motor pumps and potentially, I, they did the report, I didn't make up.
Okay, so, but, but gravity, no, I'm just trying to understand, because the difference, because it was like, $778, I think, is the insane amount that anybody should pay for septic for a year. And anything over that, you shouldn't even bother doing it, that kind of thing.
Well, before you even get to the O and M numbers, which I read, seem a little higher than the cost.
I wasn't, I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I couldn't say, because I'm not an engineer. I'm just reading them with the numbers. And I'll email you the report by the end of this meeting. But the, some of the bigger points they made is that there simply is no place to put a sewage system in Rhine Cliff.
Well, now that Alan's on the board, we can put it on his property.
Two reactions.
Why don't you take it by eminent domain?
Two reactions. You obviously did a lot of research, and I hope you can submit this in writing to us, some kind of, so it doesn't get lost.
Email it by the end of this evening.
Pardon me?
By the end of the evening, I'll email you everything.
Oh, okay, fine. Second thing, I guess what one has to wrestle with is if there are grants available, and the engineers tell us it's feasible, would that be a better solution than not doing anything and hoping that there'll never be a problem from health officials and other officials? Because if we, and we, I mean, if a sewer district in Rhine Cliff had a fund, the construction of sewers, that would dwarf any of these numbers that you gave us.
Well, that's what those numbers were.
Well, you know, the numbers I gave you were O and M without the actual cost of capital.
Right. And I'm saying if we had to pay, we, you, or the residents had to pay the cost of capital.
There's, there's a lot of, yeah, I think the thing that one has to keep in mind is that there's nobody in the DEC that finds the amount of pollution generated by, let's say potentially 10 houses that have failures, or 15 houses. The Hudson is a very large flow of water. So the amount of pollution that creates, although not desirable, is so small that that sort of, you know, if you figure that a rolling number of septic systems are always failing over the course of a year, the one here, one there, and then that gets fixed, and that gets fixed. But if it adds up to 10 or something on any given basis, it seems like the way to address that is individually, you know, at the time. It doesn't, there, there's nothing in the DEC going back when this was much worse, when the hotel had no septic system. They wrote that this was an insignificant amount of flow into the Hudson. So it seems like you could spend a lot of money with a solution to a problem that doesn't actually exist, creating a sewage district for a very small area. Now, had this in 1982 been incorporated into the Gardens, and Creed had been built, and it was part of a large system, I think it would be much more justifiable, because it's doing a lot. But for such a small community, it could create a large burden and a lot of problems that don't exist now.
Bruce, in Vanderburg Cove, I assume that there were some government officials that stirred things up to cause.
Wait, 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 first. We, we own Vanderburg Cove. We own both systems. We own the collection system and everything else. It was coming out, it was discharging onto the surface. We were looking at $37,500 a day penalties unless we fixed it, because it was coming up onto the surface, concentrated, going into a narrow stream, down into the bay areas.
The cove.
Yeah, the cove. And wiping those out or doing something with those before it even got into the deep water. Where Rhine Cliff's on the deep water.
Exactly.
And, and we don't own it.
Right. I would say that if, well, A, you don't own it, so the liability for the town is not existing now. And B, if there is leakage and it goes into the storm drain, it does go into the Hudson as opposed to a small stream, which is clearly more capable of handling, you know, some sort of effluent compared to a stream. And I would just point out that the riverkeepers and every other organization that we've contacted, they don't even know what we're talking about when we mention Rhine Cliff. They're just like, what do you, we have Kingston to worry about, we have major sources of pollution, you gotta be joking with Rhine Cliff. I mean, it's, it's, I would also point out that if you look at a tax map from 1900, and you look at one from today, it hasn't dramatically changed in the number of structures. There isn't some 400 units that have been built. You know, it's 150, they don't even deliver mail in Rhine Cliff, because they don't figure the density is enough.
I think somebody else wanted to speak.
Yeah, my Andrew Shepard.
I'm sorry, Andrew?
Andrew Shepard, also from Rhine Cliff. The laws of unintended consequences are really big here. And right now, the town doesn't have any liability. There are ongoing repairs. I see them all the time. Many of us just have to have system repaired. They're really, this is a solution looking for a problem. And the problem is that if you, if you get a grant that says, we have this big pool of money, believe me, someone will figure out how to design your system. Someone will figure out how to dig you the ditches. Someone will figure out how to pay all the legal fees that are gonna be involved. But at the end of the day, it's the Rhine Cliff that's gonna be stuck with the bill. And, and we can't, you know, guess what that would be. But you can go into a situation where you tell a homeowner, you can't live here unless you fix your, your system. You can buy a system that goes in your basement, that you can put your waste into and drink out of the other end of it. It's expensive, but it's the homeowner's liability. It's not the town's. The, the solution to this isn't a grant, digging up a Hamlet. It's just fixing what needs to be fixed as we go along. And it, my big fear is that, you know, everyone will go, Sandy money, no, all this great Sandy money, which I think is, you know, unfortunate that's the way our government operates, that, you know, everyone has to run to get this money. There's no, there's not a problem. Nobody's calling you from the DEC. Nobody's calling you from the health department. If I have a problem, my hospital will call me.
I don't think this started out as sewage. I think it started out as stormwater, and then somehow got into the sewage thing.
It, it's, it's started out sort of as both. But even if you pursue it in that manner, if you go in and you dig through this shallow bedrock, you're going to disturb foundations. You are going to disturb the myriad of underground water passages in Rhine Cliff. Anyone that's familiar with it knows that when your neighbor does something to his yard, all of a sudden there's a stream running through your basement. And it's, you know, nobody can say where that water's coming from. Some of it's natural water, some of it's undoubtedly slightly contaminated from animals out there dying on the ground, whatever. It's an extremely complicated situation. Our water gets, goes out a couple of times a year now, because the pipes from the village water supply are so old and fragile, that it's like, oh, no, turn on the faucet, it's out again. Could you imagine if you started digging through that? And like Matt said, if you, if you go down Kelly Street, you've got all these people who have been living there all their lives, and they've got, you know, the B-dry system or whatever that's getting rid of the water that's accumulating in their basement, it's not necessarily coming from their septic, it's coming because it's moving all around. If you take, the, put in a new pipe and say, "Well, we can't connect you to this pipe unless you've been tested," what are they to do? Let their basement fill up with water, have it run down the street, and have their house uninhabitable? The unintended consequences are really huge, and things can get away from you really quickly when there's money on the table. So, the reason we have all this documentation is because this keeps coming round and round and round in Rhine Cliff, and every time, the community gets up and says, "No, this is not the right solution for us all." And so I urge you really to, to take that to heart, and, you know, think about Vanderburg Cove, I mean, what are those filters cost, a million bucks?
Yeah, we spend a lot of money down there.
Yeah, you know, and all the legal and all the time, you know, it's, you know, we're kind of a throwback to another time, and we, I think, I would commend Kathy himself for her work. Every time we have a major event and there's a problem, she comes down and she looks around and says, "We can offer you this solution, we can try this and see what happens." Everything, we haven't had a major storm to assess, the most recent repairs, but from talking to people, it seems to be working quite well. So I think that kind of approach, where you're just assessing the needs as they come along, is way less dangerous. And honestly, you just had a whole conversation about affordable housing, workforce housing. There, Rhine Cliff actually will offer some affordability, there are a bunch of old timers still in Rhine Cliff. You gonna bounce them with a two, two thousand dollar increase in, in the cost of living there every year? It doesn't make any sense though. Then, I have a neighbor two houses away that has a well, because it would be too expensive to go through the big rock on Vanderburg Road to get to the water supply. So they actually have a well right below their septic system, which, you know, isn't great either, but, but it just shows you what those costs are gonna be when you have to start, you know, mandating, and then you're gonna, you're gonna put people in the district who cannot hook up to the system for one reason or another, the costs are gonna be completely variable. You're gonna have a lot of rich people out in the archive who are gonna say, "Why are you putting me in this district? Fuck my lawyer, it's on the map, don't open." Meetings will be a lot shorter, I think, because of one... Except Jill, who will make the nine in one report. I'd like to thank Jill for fixing my problem with my, my recycling bin, it keeps running out, but Jill keeps building it up.
Kathy, you wanna speak?
Uh, yeah, yes, thank you. I just wanted to add, and that was kindly said, we didn't want to hear this, some information on this issue. It's a very, very complicated issue, and it's one of those situations where everybody's right. It really is true, because you have, this did start, versus right, this started because of stormwater issues, unfortunately, because when you're looking at trying to address some of the stormwater issues, the waste issues do come into play into the conversation that's unavoidable at times, because in some cases, and we've done our own very not, not professional tests, they're called odor tests, but we have done some, you know, we, we've seen down there that there are some issues of some places where there, yes, there is waste coming into the stormwater system. The problem is that, yeah, this is a huge burden, I mean, to get into something like that, I think everybody understands that, and, but it did come from a place of people complaining about actual stormwater issues and drainage issues that, that do exist, and you're right, thank you very much, we've done a lot of work down there, it's always been piecemeal work that we've done, whenever we've done it, we've seen results, immediate results in the area that we've worked on, and that's great. But we're sort of at the point, this did start again, I'm sort of when it started the whole thing, because we're the ones who came and said to the board, "We are as far as we've gone on the Band-Aid patching workaround system." If you really want to address drainage issues that the board was hearing about from the public down there, and nobody wants to pit neighbors against neighbors, but there are two very legitimate points of view here. One is fix my, the drainage and the problems coming over my land, and the other is, hey, because there are these issues, let's not burden everybody into this big, huge, you know, capital program thing. So unfortunately, the burden for discussing and deciphering that falls to the board. But, but there are two very divergent needs down there. The stormwater, I agree also, the construction would be a real problem, it would be a problem for us, that's why we came and said, "If we're going to do fixes down there or something that's a phased-in plan, we can do a little bit this year, a little bit next year, and have a ten-year plan, you know, and meet it out, we need engineering to devise that plan, because we've ta- we're taking it as far as we can, as I said, except on an as-needed Band-Aids, coat hangers, you know, type repair, whatever that we can do when we need to." So that's sort of just additional background as to how this got to this point, and I just wanted to add that in as point of information. Thank you for the compliments, I'll pass them on to the crew, that means a lot to them. Yeah, there's a real problem down there, because we are still relying, I'm only talking about stormwater now, not stormwater, it's the wastewater, but the stormwater system is relying basically on this blind ditch that everybody's heard about, which is over a hundred years old, and in some places is a blind ditch, and others is a clay pipe, and others is a metal pipe, and others is, it's patchwork. You can have, you know, six inches of flow go into four inches of flow, into ten inches of flow, into six inches of flow, I mean, it's a recipe for disaster. So, I mean, the system that's down there, it's not a question of will it fail, it's really a question of when will it fail? Because it, it will, it's been failing, fails, that's why we're doing the repairs that we're doing. So there's a lot to think about with that, because how do you address one without the other, not easy questions, very, very, very complicated issue, and I just wanted to add that in to the discussion. Thank you, glad that it helped.
So, we will wrestle with it and decide whether, we hope it's the next board's problem, not our problem, but maybe it's our problem. So, I think it's very useful that your presentation be put in writing, and I'm sure there'll be many more discussions about it.
Can I add, if there were a public hearing that you guys scheduled for input, we could pretty much pack this place full of people with lots of experience on this now and who share our position.
Let me suggest that to the supervisor.
It's just difficult when we don't know, you know, at the end of a meeting, if it's gonna be three people here, or whether it's gonna be just back and forth discussion, or whether you guys would just sit back and say, "Okay, we listened to you." So we don't wanna draw people to meetings that we don't find are productive, but we have a large number of people.
I will suggest that to the supervisor.
You guys ready for brief announcements?
Uh, only if it's brief.
All right. I'll be brief. Tomorrow evening at five-thirty PM here, courtesy of Rhine Beck's own friend, Naro, we're hosting a screening of a movie called Take Back Your Power, it's about smart meters. The website is takebackyourpower.net, the documentarian, his name is Josh Del Sol, he's already won awards, just came out last year. I got a resolution passed unanimously in January in the Dutch County Legislature, pushing for state legislation for opt-outs for homeowners that have to have these quote-unquote smart meters. The only problem is, the resolution I got passed unanimously, the Dutch County Legislature was not as strong as the resolution I got passed in, in December in the Ulster County Legislature, and that resolution said, if anything is gonna pass in Albany, it should include E R Ts, encoding receiver transmitters, which Central Hudson has installed, about a hundred and twenty thousand of them all over. This movie will blow your mind, trust, trust me. If anybody here is free, anybody watching at home, you need to be here tomorrow, five-thirty PM, right here at Rhine Beck Town, I'll Take Back Your Power. The county home fuel tax, there are an incredible amount of people in Rhine Beck and Clinton and all over Dutchess County that are livid, would not be understated. Now, I never voted for it, I've been trying to lead the fight against it since I ever heard about it, October, November, I still get calls and emails complaining about it, people are livid that the oil delivery companies are charging the Dutchess County home fuel tax, even if they made a prepaid agreement from last year. And there's a form you can apply for through the county executives, also the State Department of Taxation and Finance, basically has made it clear, basically you're still screwed, and you can apply for some sort of rebuttal on that. But I'm just letting you know that it's very unusual for fifty people in one weekend to sign on to an online petition. One of your town board members, Ms. Scher, signed on, Deirdre Burns, head of the Rhine Beck School Board until June, she signed on. It's a petition that does not only say, "We need to repeal the county home fuel tax," it says there's a whole bunch of other ways to find millions of dollars in revenue, dealing with the money pit, that's the county jail, the county incinerator, the failure to put solar in the county building, the pay-to-play, the, what's going on with the Dutchess County I D A and I D M, on down the line. So, that's, and I'm doing a forum, because I've done a lot of forums about this, I'm doing another one, that's gonna be Tuesday, April fifteenth, here in this room, at five-thirty PM. So people can come and complain to me, and we can help generate some ideas and some political will to build up some alternative sources of revenue to this county home fuel tax. I put together a resolution, why can't the county legislature itself host forums on this around the county? As well, this June, the Dutchess County Incinerator contract with Covanta runs out, and I'm also pushing for forums on that. The only other thing I was gonna mention is, because of that county incinerator contract running out, Wednesday, April ninth, five-thirty PM at Bachelor College, Neil Selman, who's the president of the Institute for Local Self-Reliance out of Washington, D.C., he's gonna be Skyping into a zero-waste update forum that I'm hosting at Bachelor College, Rockefeller Hall, Room Two Hundred. Shabazz Jackson, he's been in this room, he is a local zero-waste expert, he's gonna be speaking. There are two hundred communities all across the country that do curbside collection of organic waste, there's no reason why we can't make something like that happen here. Again, if you didn't know, Baptist Home, here in Rhine Beck, it's a hospital, different folks from the school district and the fairgrounds have indicated to me, often over the last decade, they might be willing to do some composting, some mulching of the, collection of, of the food waste. Half the waste stream is food waste in the incinerator, doesn't even want it. Folks at the incinerator don't even want food waste, food scraps, because it's seventy, eighty percent water, so. That's it, I'm at four five three two one oh five, eight seven six two four eight eight, and call me, I'll get you a hard copy, or I'll email you that online petition. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I haven't even heard no other business, unless somebody has something.
I just have one more very brief thing that I wanted to mention, at the last board meeting, we talked about the heating replacement, and I wanted to let you all know that I have been in touch with Bobby, he's given me the estimates of what it would cost to repair the heat. Our office, our Director of Government Affairs is currently looking for grants. I've also reached out to Kevin Cahill's office, I have a meeting set up with them for Wednesday, and tomorrow, I have a meeting set up with our federal representatives to see what kind of help they might be able to find for us.
That's great, if you can shake some money loose.
I'm gonna try like that.
Okay, that, we'd make you heroine of the month if you did that. Hearing nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.